You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is November 27th, 2023 meeting of the La Porte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Like to call the La Porte County Council regular meeting for November 27th, 2023, right at six o'clock. Please turn off cell phones. Please, let's do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and eternal, eternal and all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Yagelski.
Present.
Councilman Keel.
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Present.
Councilman Karanka.
Present.
And Councilman Mullenhour.
Present.
Thank you.
Before we approve the agenda, I have the following changes. Under Old Business, we're gonna, where it only has one item, employee reclassification request, that becomes a number one. And number two is there'll be a discussion on the annex, the $1.7 million appropriation. Under appropriations, transfers, and requests, we are removing the first one under La Porte I will try and get all these numbers correctly so that we can do a transfer. Last month, we transferred to an account that was the wrong account, so we have to reverse that. This is going to be under the La Porte County Auditor's Office. So, we transferred.
On page three.
On page, on page three, at the top, we'll have to squeeze it in. We have to reverse what we transferred last time, so we have to revert, it's all of $500, and we're taking it back out of 30027, which is, turns out to be the educational, education instructional training fund. We're putting it back into the 20001 account, which I do not have a name for it in front of me.
Office Supplies.
Office Supplies. That's the first part, is the reversal. The second part is to actually go from Office Supplies to 0001, $500. And I'll repeat this again when we get to it. And it's going to go to account 40122.
Which I believe is the bond, I think it's called lease bond payment.
Meaning just a transfer, and we're doing some bookkeeping, did not need to be advertised. Okay? There is just on page four, in the very top, we have a bonus correction of $36,710.43, and then a $1,000 employee bonus. The total on the right says $36,710. That should be $37,710.43.
Thank you.
Those are the corrections that I have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
As amended.
We have a motion as second.
I'd offer a friendly amendment to this motion to include as a number four under New Business, a discussion about the draft 1782 notice that we received last week. Put that under New Business on the floor. I'd offer that as a motion, an amendment to the motion.
I would request that we have that at our December 11th meeting, if we're going to have a December 11th meeting, so.
My reason for suggesting it tonight is that some of the items that we need to discuss will take time to implement, and we may want to start those, that process before we get to the December 11th meeting.
I believe he's offering an amendment, and I don't know if it needs to, and I need to be seconded.
We need a second.
There's the birthday boy.
Is there any second? Hearing no second, there's no amendment. All those in favor of the original amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Approval of minutes, we had a council budget public hearing minutes from October 19th, 2023.
Which President motion to approve, guys read.
Any second?
I'll second it with a comment.
Mr. Novak, okay, we're ready for comments.
So the comment is, it's not a correction, but last month, we did a reversal on the rainy day fund for the 1.7 million for the renovation of the complex. And then we also reversed the $580,000 that was for claims. We did not, we re-appropriated the 1.7.
I found that.
But we did not re-appropriate the 580,000. So, that, just to make a note of that, that we need to look into that, and if we need to do something at that next meeting, we need to do it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Something, Mr. President, was something else just missed?
No, what happened was, that was originally for an estimated bill. We originally, then we got an additional, we got the actual bill, and then when the additional monies for the two, the additional 2.3 million was appropriated, I thought that it was covered in there. Or actually, that bill, I believe, was paid for by the insurance company, when the insurance company coughed up additional money. I think that's what happened, and I think when we take a further look at it, that's what we will find.
We just need to make sure we do check that.
We will reaffirm. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. The regular county council meeting minutes, October 30th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? I actually think the last discussion should have been on this topic.
It was.
Okay. Anyway, clearing that. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Okay, we move on to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to come up to the podium and have a public comment? If you are on Zoom, and if you'd like to make a public comment, please raise a hand. Seeing no one present here willing, wanting to come up, seeing no hands raised on Zoom, we close public comment. We move on to department head reports. Is there any department heads that would like to report at this time? Seeing no department heads in the audience, and seeing no departments with their hands up on Zoom, we will close department head reports.
He wants to go see the Bears game.
Liaison reports. So, we'll start at the corner. Mr. Mullenhour, would you like to give your liaison report?
You passed.
You passed? I'm sorry. Mr. Karanka.
Took a couple of, had a couple of quick conversations with the Corners office in MS4 regarding some items that we're going to see on the agenda tonight. Also attended the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting last week, and the Purdue Extension Office meeting, Board meeting. One thing of note is, I'm seeing definite attention being paid by specifically MS4 regarding what they're absorbing when it comes to services provided by their contractors, and reviewing them with some fiscal responsibility to assure that we're managing those funds appropriately. And we'll, we'll talk when we get to that line item later.
Mr. New.
Attended the Fairgrounds Comprehensive Planning Meeting that we put together, EMA Communications District Meeting. And, and I'm going to give an answer to that, because it's actually Mr. Mullenhour's liaison, but it was because of the cell service with Verizon, there was an outage down at the lakefront, so that's why. The broadband meeting with the State Director of Broadband, Winter Ops meeting over at the Healthcare Foundation Redevelopment Commission, the Ag Association Annual Meeting, FMAC, the Alexander Chemical Groundbreaking, for those, I think there were a few of us there. It's absolutely fantastic, the money that they're putting in out there, and to talk to the owners, it's incredible, the investment that they're putting in. We had an exec session meeting with the Extension Board, out of Purdue Extension, we had a meeting at the BZA, and Complex Flood. And just to give an update on the Complex Flood, the, they anticipate the fifth floor being done in February, and then maybe every month after that, it would be the fourth and third will be completed. So that's what they're looking at. I think I sent everybody some pictures tonight of everything that's going on in there, they're getting ready to start in the Sheriff's Department, and as soon as they get the current side that's already done, cleared by the analyst, air content, samplings, they'll be ready to move on, so, that's it.
Mr. Keel.
Among many things, this month, I attended a Kingsbury Town Council meeting, spoke with some of their elected officials, attended the Alexander Chemical Groundbreaking, attended an elected official's reception held by the Michigan City Chamber, and spoke with several of my liaison assignments by phone or in person this month. And then I also spent a considerable amount of time studying the 1782 notice and the budget, and the associated 1.2 million in budget reductions, and 1.6 million in levy reductions. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Yagelski.
The question was asked last meeting about bidding process for computers and stuff like that. The only reason why there was a special exception is because Black Friday is a issue that comes up only once a year and has special sales that could launch. We don't, we don't bid, once the first year comes out, we don't rebid computers, we buy it for the year, and we get the government rate, just like we do with the cars when the Sheriff Department or the county highway. There's a set number by the state, and we pick that number by the state. That's what we use for pricing for it. We did use an exception to the case, this Black Friday, I guess there were some purchases that were made. But we don't normally shop outside of that, that list, once the first year happens, or whatever. So we decided, we decided to vote for and keep the government rate, we keep the government rate. We get a special discount on that, and there's some bells and whistles that come with the whole thing, too, with stuff that comes with the computers, but that kind of answered your question, because I know you were asking that question.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Mr. Karanka.
Most important, I attended the meeting with U.S. Representative Marvann in Michigan City. We did have some discussion regarding the Franklin Street Bridge and the federal government's Passed that information on to one of his aides, and there is some communication, I know Mr. Yagelski's been on that in the past. Secondly, I don't know if this is the time for it, but I would, just stop me if you don't think it is. The suggestion that councilmen talk to their department heads, their liaison assignments, it seems to me that we would be far better served to come up with a statement that is generic enough that all seven of us could agree to, and send it out in writing to all department heads, so that we're at uniform, and there's no debate about he said, she said. It just seems like that makes more sense. In fact, that's what we're going to do. Rather than having each one of us go have personal conversations, and that always gets translated a little bit different than what a written statement is.
Anything else, Mr. Cunningham?
No, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. I attended some of these meetings, spoke to several liaisons, did not go into great depth, but have had discussions on the 1782 notices, more to it, it'd be shortchanging you if we start talking about it, because there's several different things that need to be addressed, so I don't want to go into belaboring it. That's it for my report. Okay, we have correspondence.
We received a letter from Judge Alavizos regarding his request for reclassification that originally was submitted in February of 2023. Would you like for me to read it?
He's right, I hear.
I'm not sure this necessarily is on the agenda for tonight.
Yes.
So.
Under Old Business.
Yeah, under, under Old Business. I mean, you're welcome to come up, but if you want to wait till Old Business, you know, we can do that.
Well, just simply, are we going to, are we going to move on it today, or is it going to be?
It's my, it's my anticipation, we're going to move on it, but, you know, there's six other people.
My correspondence was that, you know, we started the process in February, were approved by the committee in May. June 1st, we had asked, it got tabled. I know it got involved with other things, it's a one-of-a-kind position. Two people have held this position, they've done well, all the counties in the state on JDAI, the top six get extra money every year, we've always gotten into that. And it's like $2,300 difference that we're talking about. And I just didn't, my, you know, didn't want my employee to continue to be in limbo, but as long as it, this is going to be up and down vote today, I'm fine. If you have any questions about the situation, ask me now.
I also did receive the full packet of information, including your letter and the attachments. So we, we do have the documentation, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to public healing for the Economic Revitalization Area Co-Alliance Cooperative, we had the first public hearing for this, I believe? And this is the second? Oh.
No, we had.
No.
We did not have one, yes, just for the.
The claratory. Okay, so now we have, so we opened this up for public comment, it's a change, it's creating an economic revitalization area for Co-Alliance Cooperative, which is planning on doing major improvements in the South County portion.
Union Mills, I believe.
Believe it's in the Union Mills area. So anybody that like, would you like to just give us a quick update? Thank you, Matt. This is Matt Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt Riordan, Office of Economic Development and Planning. The, we had a petitioner, Co-Alliance, which is an existing Port County business, and they approached us a handful of months ago about a 6.536 million dollar investment they were entertaining at the address, it's 3551 West, 800 South, Union Mills. And briefly, this company employs over 1,000 people in the state of Indiana, there's 38 employees in La Porte County. This will be, this project will be retaining two jobs and creating one job. The request before the council for the creation of the area and approval of the statement of benefits for both real and personal property would be for five years. And as I said, the total investment is about $6.5 million. There's a representative from the company, Co-Alliance, Ryan Satchel is here, we've been working along with them. The project, it's actually, I think, the first request for any incentives that somebody has made in South County, at least since I've been around, and that's good to hear. It's always good to know that the existing business base is trying to expand and refurbish what they have here today in the county. The particulars of the incentives, as I mentioned, is $3.3 million for building, and approximately, with me one second. Sorry, 3.236 in equipment, and $3.3 million estimate in the county. This is a noble township, tax rate down there is 2.0507. The company is also aware that based on the condition of tax abatement in their application, that a fee would be due as a result of this, the total fee estimated, as we have in the past, and this is a recommendation of the staff, is that instead of charging, if the council would approve this and the statement of benefits, instead of charging 15% per year and having that being tracked, what we have done for past applicants is basically divided that, taken that math and divided that number by two, and the total amount that would be due for fee for this particular project would be $15,865. Any other questions? There is a representative from the company, if you'd like to hear about a little bit more, what they're going to do, but it obviously includes refurb, new building, development, and a location that's built for the, that's zoning's allowed for the use.
Can you, just for the public again, explain how the abatement works over the five years? It's phased in, and it's only on the.
Correct. So, as an example, this particular company already pays $52,000 in property tax in the county, as a result of their existing operations. So what would happen theoretically is, this company makes an investment of $3.3 million in a new building. Okay? So, there's a pretty sizable assessment manual that goes along with how properties assess, but for general purposes, what we typically take is about 70% of that, okay? So, if they built a building absent any assistance, they would owe an additional $47,000 in taxes. So what happens in the abatement scenario is this, first year, they save 100, second year, they save 20, third year, they save 40, 60, and so on. It's 180, 60, 40, 20, and it reverses. So, along with the fee, and along with the existing taxes they already pay, the net revenue to the county for both, it looks to be, is estimated at $154,865. So today, we have zero, the abatement does this, they pay the abatement fee, they keep the employees, they pay one more, and it was, like I said, I think it's the first abatement that I know that I've been involved in, or assistance with the company in South County. So that's, I think it's a good thing. And, and Ryan's here from Co-Alliance, if anybody has any specific questions, I'd hate to have him come up here and not have anybody ask anything, but I also told him, it's kind of a good thing if everybody's nodding their head and somewhat of agreement, so, with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. It is open to public comment, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Again, if you're on Zoom, you would need to raise a hand. Please state your name and address.
John Carr, 1902 North Whisper Crossing, La Porte, Indiana. And I would just like to make a couple of comments in regards to this ordinance. I think it's great to see a small, well, not small, but a large business doing good on a small community. I think, I think that's great. The only thing that I ask is maybe, Co-Alliance takes some consideration and reaching out to local contractors, build their project and bid on it, have an opportunity, dealing with the projects in the past. We ran into workers coming from all over the Midwest, and we'd just like to make sure that the local workers here have a chance of that project. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
I'd have a question now, if that thing's loaded up. Since the guy is already here, could you come to the microphone and answer a question?
We, let me finish the public comment, then we'll do that.
No rush.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one else from the public wanting to come up, seeing nobody on Zoom from the public that would like to speak with a hand up, we close public comment. We now go on to, I think, we'll stay, we can go on to the resolution, or we can have this question right now.
You can go on to the resolution, and then.
Thank you.
And then.
Under Ordinances and Resolutions, we have Resolution Number 202311. It's a confirmatory resolution for Co-Alliance Cooperative Economic Revitalization Area.
Motion to read by title only.
We have a motion to read by title only, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Please read by title.
Resolution Number 2023-11, a resolution of the La Porte County Council confirming portions of La Porte County, Indiana be designated as an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC 6-1.1-12.1-1 et sec.
Okay, we would like to move this forward.
I'll do a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Now, we have the opportunity for discussion. We call on Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you. You, representative from Co-Alliance?
And sir, please state your name.
Yep, Ryan Satchel, Kuller, Indiana.
And your title with the company, please.
Capital Asset Manager.
Thank you, sir.
In light of the previous comment, my question to you is, do you have your own building firm that you use across the country? Or is it each job built out, did out individually?
Yeah, generally, I think we've got about 26 projects going in the state of Indiana and Ohio. So generally, we try and work locally. We work, we've got about 80 locations across that area, and we'll work with those local managers to identify who we can support that, those projects. This particular project is a pretty significant project, that's just simply the complexity of the layout of the building, and then the cost of the equipment. So we really have to look at who the manufacturing is of that equipment, and then work down on how that will work as far as implementing it. In this situation, we tried to work locally with different, with as far as setting the facility and prepping the site, but when it comes to the actual concrete and the equipment itself, then we needed to work somebody that specialized in those.
Anything else, Mr. Cunningham?
That answers my question, thank you.
Mr. Yagelski.
In reference to Mr. Carr coming up and making a point, I just, as a council, we try to look at companies or that, that will train employees, because as you know, it's our best method to train. So example, if you were using electricians and that, they have a really good training program, that works good, kind of twofold for us. So as a suggestion, what Mr. Carr's bringing up, that's the only groups, unfortunately, that does training, and so it does help us in that respect, just as a point.
Yeah, good, good points, and I can assure you that all these projects that we look at, it goes out through our company internally, so that everyone's aware of those, and so we make a conscious effort to reach out, to identify, is there somebody locally that is, that can be serviced at? A perfect example is, is concrete sometimes, those levers, when we're doing different jobs of those, and so we'll, we'll look at that, and we'll try and figure out, we are aware of that. We'll often, as far as electrician goes, we'll also try and use somebody locally. We might have somebody do the general contracting of that, to kind of oversee the layout, but everyone's short on hands, it's very difficult for somebody to cover that big of an area, so it's important that we work with the local industry, the local market there to supply those needs.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm going to add one comment there, I've also seen where, when you do use local, what they do is they do bring in teams of people, sometimes from different businesses, just because the mass numbers, you recognize the point where, that there might be a shortage of people. We seem to be getting stronger and stronger in our area because there's a greater need, and because of these training programs, we're seeing growth in the industry. I can tell you from high schoolers, seeing them graduate and finding out what are they doing, they're going into the trades, this is not something, you know, I was hearing about and seeing happen before, but there's a strong number, and they even have training programs locally, and I don't know how, you said you're from Culver, so you do know Indiana, so I just don't know if you know much about La Porte, so I just figured I'd share that statement with you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Is there any other questions from anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? None, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Thank you. We have gone to Old Business. Now, this employee reclassification, I believe, was tabled with others, so therefore, we would need to take it off the table, or let's do that just to be sure. Do I have a motion to take it off the table?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Thank you. So now we can discuss this. What we have in front of us, the employee reclassification request, we've had the judge come up and tell us. It is a classification, just bear with me, I want to make sure I get the, the, it right. We are going from a PAT III to a PAT IV, and in this, it was roughly about a $2,300 difference, and so therefore, is there any, would anybody like to make?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and I have a second. Any discussion?
So discussion. At some point, we, we discussed this position, several others, where we are comparing individuals versus comparing roles, right? Within those job classifications, Judge Alavizos has done pretty well to outline the fact that this is, this is a very unique position. Is there any chance that you could give us some outlines, not on the person, but on the position, on how it's technically different?
Well, it's a, it's a unique position, because it, it has a lot of community outreach involved, and it also does projects on Saturdays, and obviously, when they work on Saturdays, they can take time off during the week, but it's, it's, you know, it's a position that you know you'll be working on Saturdays, because you do community projects. It, we get grant money.
It, we get grant money and like I said, every year we've had only two people in this role and they've both done well. The first one left to get a higher paid role in the county at the time. The, that we've done so well that we get bonus money and it, and it funds projects and keeps our, our population low at the center. We've also, at the same time, in two thousand eight, started, started to build a state for what they used in our center. And this year, we might be, we might break a million and a half dollars in money back from DCS for the use of our center for renting, basically housing kids in the, not in the secure side, but in the non-secured side of our center. This, so the JDA process is trying to identify kids who might be in trouble younger, to divert them from the system, to come up with alternative programs, to work with community partners, to deal with those programs, to work as our team, also the, that, that this person heads and are, that meets quarterly. And he has to meet with on a regular basis, our members of the community, business owners, police chiefs, school superintendents. It's a pretty wide-ranging job. It takes somebody on the ball, somebody who knows everything. We hired Tyler, the current individual, away from positions where he's had interactions with the juvenile justice system before. Local person. But the job itself, we didn't know what it was going to be when we really started it with it. But now that we're going twelve years into JDAI, it's really evolved into rather busy and more importantly, there's initiative in that position too. You know, you have to be, you bring ideas to the, to the group as to how we can handle things. So I think in order to continue to, obviously, I'm going to be gone after next year. But in order to continue to, I think, attract good people in that position and, and have my successor have the same success that we've been managed to have over the course of last year, I think we need to keep, keep the salary high. And like I said, it's not a big bump. I think the cost, if you saw for six months, it was going to be like less than twelve hundred bucks. So it's under twenty-five hundred dollars a year of a bump. Is that right, Randy?
It said eleven fifty-four and change multiplied by two.
Yeah, so I figured.
You're talking twenty-three and change.
Yeah.
Just under, just, you know, not even twenty-four.
And this is a position, if you recall, that we cobbled together. We took, as, as we brought down the population at the juvenile center through, through these programs, we combined some positions to create this. So we actually saved money in the creation of this position too. I don't, I think Randy recalls that. Earl recalls that. I'm not calling this old, but.
No, you aren't.
We had, we had some other comments or questions. Mr. Yagowski, please.
Judge, you did a good job explaining, I understand your, your classification. There was a, I believe one of the judges got a classification increase on their main employee that they worked for. And I thought it was the same three to four. Is there a problem that we haven't kept all those positions? Or this doesn't really have nothing to do with those?
This has nothing to do with those positions.
It's the same job, same job.
And those positions, if you recall, my employee.
Yes.
We, we were told to apply for it. We didn't even seek it because they had given it to the other.
Because I know there's two other judge.
I'm gonna say something that, I think the, the role of that position in each court is very different in each court in this county. And so it might actually be wise to look at those.
Okay.
But I think where there's been some animosity with some of my colleagues is there just doesn't seem to be a dialogue as to why this is happening.
I understand. And that, and you know why I'm bringing it up, but.
Yeah.
So just for the council's reference, there's one position that we increased to three to four, not counting this one. And so I know that I've caught some other judges and.
I think those are like from five to six.
Was it five to six? So I, so I had other judges that have asked the same question and some of the people that worked for it. So I think it was much, which, which was brought up here about the, does it need to be uniform? Maybe not. I don't, I don't know that answer, but, okay, thank you. You answered that question, thank you.
Two questions. One, I noticed on the paperwork here, it says, have you previously requested reclassification of this position? It says yes. So did the job evaluation committee previously deny that request or?
Not that I remember.
He tabled it, but did the?
No, they only.
Perhaps it was a miscommunication.
I think what it was is that probably referred to when we created that position.
Ah, gotcha.
Because it wasn't a traditional position. It happened after we started to get grant money from the state from the JDAI. And then we, and in fact, the first year or two, I think we used some of the grant money. And I, I think it was originally one of those, we create, we took two YSW positions to create it. So the, it was a kind of a win-win at the time for the county.
Gotcha. I, I don't take exception to your, your request and, and I want to acknowledge your frustration in this process and that it has taken a lot longer than probably what you would have liked it to have been. The issue that we've run into is that we believe that the job evaluation committee needs to get training and better reevaluate some of the positions that had tried reclassifying in the past. And so to my colleagues, I would ask that we, as part of this vote, also address what needs to be done about the job evaluation committee. Do we want to keep pushing for them to get training? Do we want to restructure? It could quite possibly be that we just do the job evaluations ourselves twice a year and skip the process of having a job evaluation committee. But we need to do something about it so that we don't end up stalling out requests that other departments make in the future.
I would, I would request that if, if that's the wishes of the council, that we find out how much the training is and that the council, council funds it so that it's there and it's done and we're not relying on commissioners to do it.
Yeah, we can fund consultants for this sort of financial research.
So if you want to find out how much it is, we can.
It would be based off of the number of billable hours that they took on.
Because it's kind of hybrid. It has members of the commission, has members of the council, and it has other.
Department.
Department heads, so.
We, we, just to, this is off topic, that discussion from what you were, so just bear with me one moment longer. We had previously approved and requested the training. So now we just need to now figure, I appreciate. Find out what the cost is so that we can.
I mean, frankly, it's probably four, five hours, whatever it takes for them to conduct the training at the normal billable rate, so.
We'll get a number. Okay, thank you. On that, now let's get back to, we have a motion on the floor in a second to approve this. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, we have one nay, motion carries.
One related question. Are you going to need an additional appropriation in order to cover this additional cost? Or do you have the funds that you can shift around in order to?
Oh, I think the original letter said we had funds we could shift around.
Yes, I have that copy and we'll take care of that this week for you.
All right.
Thank you.
However, we may need to look at what it looks like for.
Next year.
Twenty twenty-four, because it would probably went through in the budget at this year's.
I do believe that the budget has it as a PAT four.
Oh, so it already did?
Because they were thinking it was going to happen that month. I'm going to recheck it, but I'm pretty sure it was on there.
All right, thank you.
You're gonna, you're gonna miss coming to see us.
Even if you voted, you know what, I'm still gonna talk to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I've known him since nineteen seventy-six. Thanks, Tom.
It's either us or the House of Representatives, I don't know, so which one do you like better? Your other job.
Yeah, the other job is, it was a good job for somebody in their thirties and somebody in their thirties can have that job.
Okay, we move on to number two, which was a discussion on the annex for the one point seven million dollars. There was a little discussion prior. We had, in June, we approved one point seven million dollars and we had put things in categories. In August, we did it again with, with the full account number and account name. That was after we did a resolution or an ordinance to, to properly address some issues on that fund. And then last month, we then had reversed out the amount of money and then we put it. And, and so, but the problem was back in August, we put it in with these certain classifications. Some could argue that it's budgeted, but it was our intent to try and keep things at those numbers. But then when we went out to bid, all of those numbers should have been removed and the additional two point three million dollar cost, covered the two point three plus the one point seven, should have been enough for the four million dollars to cover all of everything. And there should have been no restrictions done at that time because we had bidded, we had, we had proper bidding numbers. So the question is, is, can we make a motion now to address that, to remove the, that, the, those, those restrictions and put it all to the general because of the, the bidding process that went through? And we have, we have legal counsel.
So I guess my question to legal counsel would be is, does this have to be re-appropriated? Re-advertised and then specified?
I would, I would say yes. Let's do it. Let's get it done.
I'd request it to be added.
It is December, so then there's nothing, so there's no issues.
Okay, so we will add that to the December eleventh meeting. Originally, the reason for the December eleventh meeting was to cover this. And I just wanted to make sure we had that quick discussion on it. Moving on to new business.
May I ask a question? The one point seven, but what about the two point three? Would that also be?
There's no restriction on those two point three. And if we haven't funded it, we need to fund it.
I believe it was funded, but I believe that it was two specific items that you emailed.
Yeah, the two point three, one of it was a significant amount for the HVAC.
Yeah.
I know that that was one of the line items.
And mechanical piping, maybe, was the email that you had sent to me with bids. So that's what it was under.
Right, okay.
Councilman.
So.
The issue, may I?
Yeah, please.
The issue is, is like on the one point seven, it says galvanized water lines. Well, there's other things in that plumbing scope that, but it's with specified galvanized water lines. Not that we're, it's to insulate some of the galvanized water lines on the cooler, chiller going up and down. We're not putting galvanized water lines in the building.
Yeah, however the council approves it, we can pay it, but when it's specific, it can only be for the specific.
So we're, we're just looking to loosen that up because there's small things in there that.
Absolutely. But the two point three million should then be reclassified the same, is what you're saying?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would suggest that we add it because we can always take it off on the eleventh rather than not have it and need it.
Yeah, so let's add that as well. Because I know that we have to go out and appropriate very soon.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other discussion there? Okay, then I'd like to move on to new business. Consider approval of council president's authorization to hire replacement position for the LaPorte County Treasurer's Office for a full-time clerk that happens to be in Michigan City.
Wish to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sorry, I don't have my paperwork. Was that, was that to replace somebody that left?
That's somebody, yeah, that, that's leaving in a few days, on Thursday.
Thursday, okay, thank you, sir.
Hearing a lot of discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Motion's of support. So what happened was there was a deadline for some grants. And we had, outside of this meeting, I'm just looking to confirm that the LPA Financial Commitment Letter for the twenty twenty-nine, notice what year, twenty twenty-nine, NDOT Group Three, open call for Bridge Forty-six for the future budgeting of twenty percent match of the total project cost of two point seven million, seven hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred and eight. Our match is five hundred and fifty-four thousand, six forty-two. We're talking year twenty twenty-nine. I'm also going to add in the Bridge One Eighty-nine for the future budgeting of twenty percent match of the total project cost of two million, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, six hundred ten dollars and seventy-five cents. Our match amount is four hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents. Combined, they are just over a million dollars. Again, it's twenty twenty-nine dollars. And every year, we get money put into cumulative and major bridges to cover these expenses. And so by then, we would anticipate, because we do this all the time. So I'm looking for a motion of support for.
Motion, motion of support.
So I have a motion of support, do I have a second?
Second question.
And we're only having to pay twenty percent of it, so.
And so now question?
Mr. President, I've asked this before, this has always been very confusing. Can we please, if you want to keep Bridge Forty-six on, you're fine. We need to get the legal description of what the actual bridge area is. This happens, some confusion on Michigan Boulevard one where they said that was the bridge.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have the paperwork with me here today, but I can share it.
Can we, if it comes up here and we're going to list it, can we please in the future list down the bridges? Because it gets very confusing.
List the location of the bridge.
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
In some type of demographics of it.
Mitch Bishop was not able to be here tonight, so.
Well, I don't, I don't need him here, but if we can just get that done, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. I will take that under advisement.
Ms. Graves, could you please make sure this is also added to the motions of support list, just so it's in that spreadsheet?
Yes, would you like me to put it under a certain fund or just have it random?
Cume Bridge.
Cume Bridge, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, comment.
Yes, sir.
In that, if you think back about a year ago, less than a year ago, we have the flood and we've had a couple rebids on situations where it's gone up a million dollars or a million and a half dollars. Now here we are projecting out to twenty-nine and we're talking about twenty percent of a fixed number. So does anybody think that the cost of fixing that bridge in twenty-nine is going to be the same as it is now? Absolutely not. So you can rest assured, our twenty percent is going to be probably double what it is here. I mean, we just have to take that into consideration. Anybody that thinks they're bidding on a job in twenty-nine, they know what it's cost. Either they're all overly bidding or they're not in the ballpark yet.
I don't think these are bids, these are just estimates at the moment.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It is kind of like a bid because they always fluctuating, but you know, either they're overestimated to cover inflation.
Yeah, good points.
Six years out, come on, guys, we, we can't get this job done locally in a year without having cost inflation.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries, much appreciated. Now, on number three, it says a request for support, but it's actually, it's really just for information this evening and to further the request for support. But we do have, and she'll come to the microphone, she'll give us her name. And I believe that she has a handout from us, it's regarding Homeward Bound Villages. It is about providing housing, low-income housing. And I'll let you discuss it, share. Thank you.
My name is Sandy Keller. I am here representing Homeward Bound Villages, which is a nonprofit that is building the first co-op-based affordable housing community in LaPorte County. Our first development is on Carwick Road at three sixteen Carwick Road. As Mr. Rosenbaum indicated, I am deferring that request to January. In consulting or conferring with him last week on some changes that have occurred, we agreed that it really makes sense to defer. So today, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the reason for deferral and be sure that you're left with a packet. I know some of you, I've met with and you've received it, some of you might have gotten it by email. But I just want to make sure that you all have consistently the same information. October of twenty twenty-two, the county council approved, I made a request for a three hundred and forty-five thousand dollar funding allocation from American Rescue Plan dollars for site development, infrastructure work on our project. The council approved a match if Michigan City matched half of that as well. We spent a bit of time with Michigan City getting their process in place, making requests. With the change in quite a few elected officials, we made the decision to defer to January or February to return to this council because we feel confident that the process is changing for approving requests. It'll be more transparent, that it will be public, that it will be on record and that it will simply be members of elected officials that are making those decisions. They have indicated that they are more than willing to consider our project again and hear from us. And so we would rather come for this organization or the council with the match rather than asking again for the full amount. And that was the reason we were on the agenda. Elections took place in that time and that's why that change is occurring. So actually, let me see if you have any questions about that. Because some of you are familiar with what, you know, that request previously and perhaps some of you aren't.
So you're planning to go back before the Michigan City Council to ask for their support as well?
Correct. And we have done that multiple times in the past, but it is a, is a, it's been a rather unusual process. We've received phone calls after non-public meetings that they were not supporting any new construction.
I believe that's a misconception by some of the administration in Michigan City because you're not the only facility that had that. There's been other requests on Michigan City and.
There's been other requests on Michigan City and.
Yeah, I don't think it was so much that they said if funding can't be used for that, it's that they chose, um, not to use it in that way, which is their prerogative to do that. Um, but that was not a, a common sentiment, um, among decision makers.
And this request, sorry, um, this request is to further enhance what's going on in Carwick Road.
So what I'm going to leave you with today, because I don't want to take your time to have the meeting. Um, I will come back, um, to present if we really do need to present. But at this time, I want to make sure that I leave you with information that some of you have received and some of you didn't. Um, I don't intend for you to go through any of this, so I'm just going to tell you what is here. Um, there's a cover letter that just explains the background, some of the things I just went over. The next is all about our project, which most of you should have received. There's a couple, um, additional items in there. Mr. Keel had made a request, uh, when I met with him for, um, a representation more clear of the funding and the percentage allocation or percentage that we're asking to be contributed from the county. So we have that for phase one of the project and the whole project. Um, the additional document that I believe, um, came up in conversation with one of you and not all of you may have received is a full market analysis of our project. This is a, uh, paid organization that does a pretty detailed um, review of not only our project, but the market, um, surrounding the area and is it viable? And so you'll see the viability of our project in that document as well. You mentioned nine copies. Um, am I just leaving them here? Should I hand them?
Um, if, if you can hand us seven up here and please give two to the auditor's office so they have them on record.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Legal counsel question.
Yes.
Guy?
Yes, sir, I must give her back.
First of all, it, it's guy's birthday today, so everybody too.
We're going to sing for him later.
Want to mention that, yeah.
Pass it over to the old timers club, Mr. Nubak.
So I just want to know if I have a, a conflict of interest on this due to the fact.
Right, no, he sold that property.
Right, well, I, I've assisted Homeward Bound when they purchased the property. They came to me. I also help Habitat for Humanity and other, uh, non-for-profits when they're doing it for a, a very small reduced fee. And they purchased that over two years ago with no contingencies on them getting any approval from anybody or anything else.
I don't see a conflict of interest. You've disclosed it to everybody.
Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a question from Mr. Yudowski.
Just a real quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so the roads that go through here are all, are they city, uh, with?
Will not be roads, they will be driveways. The, um, we have a full development plan that was worked in conjunction with the city of Michigan City. And they are authorizing road, I'm sorry, driveway, not roads, help us reduce the cost. So they will not be public.
So there won't be a problem with getting it to as far as fire and?
Correct. This is reviewed by all the city departments.
Okay, thank you.
And this has already been approved by the.
So, so approved until you permit, like, that's really, so we consider it pre-permit, but it has been reviewed by all the city departments multiple times. Um, and I do just have one question. I am unclear, if we do receive the match, do I come back before the council and make a request? Or is that something that is done, uh, different on the backend?
No, you would need to, um, since the request is going to be different, we'll need to appropriate the money. So we'll need to do that early at the beginning of the month, that you would come back and speak. So we would have to go out and advertise that we're going to use the money. Even though we may have said, supported the, you know, and that we wanted you to go back, there was nothing officially done, any amount done. So therefore, we would need to have an official amount at that time.
So even if it is the match, I'm coming back?
Don't need to come back. We just go through the process. We meet once again. But we, we technically need to appropriate the money out of the ARP funds.
Okay.
And so whatever that exact.
A motion of support is a, is a vote of favorability from the council. Um, and actual appropriation is a spending authorization, so the money can be spent. And appropriations are constrained to each fiscal year, so they expire at the end of the year unless they're encumbered.
That sounds, thank you.
Mrs. Keller, uh, one of our members is new, wasn't even here when you came in '22, so.
Two, yeah.
Two, actually. I'm sorry.
Yes.
So you seem like an old.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Not the kid.
Okay, we're moving on to appropriations, transfers and requests. We move down to Lepore County MS4. These are transfers requesting an account transfer from 100.10103, et cetera, et cetera, part-time employees to 1000.30135, et cetera, et cetera, professional fees, $8,400. I'm also going to include the request and account transfer from 100010195, et cetera, program supervisor to 10030135, professional services, $4,910.11.
Motion to approve the transfers.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Discussion.
Just give me a second. Um, discussion?
So, um, as I mentioned in liaison reports, I met with Chris Havens regarding, uh, professional services. And Chris, feel free to make any corrections as I see here online, but I'm going to speak in generalities and not so much specifics. At this time, there are some professional services invoices that we've received, that he has received on behalf of the county. And as everyone knows, the, the re, uh, restructuring of MS4, was earlier this year where they just now started to review everything that was conducted under professional services. And there's some concern about, um, that what we paid for isn't necessarily what we received. Or what we've been invoiced for is not necessarily what we received. And, uh, there needs to be some, uh, further review of the, uh, the, basically the contract with, uh, a contractor and the, the deliverables that were required in order to determine if the work is there. This money is to partially cover those outstanding invoices. And, um, I'm not sure that we want to go forward in necessarily paying those immediately. And I'm.
Just begin.
Mr. Havens?
Um, this, this balance, this, this request to transfer actually covers thirty of the year. This totally, um, pays off, we'll say, zero balance with the consulting firm. There wasn't another smaller, um, um, invoice for Jeff Wright, if you're familiar with him. He also did, did some work for MS4. But this totally closes out the account with the consulting firm.
No.
Are you satisfied with the?
I don't even see them here.
Documentation?
I see them in the front.
Oh, is it?
I, uh, I'm not satisfied with the administrative invoicing part of it. I have not actually looked at the documents that the, that the county was given, um, as far as the work completed. I know I gave it to Councilman Karanka and, and that is in, I believe, legal hands at this point. I'm not, I'm not sure.
So, Mr. Havens, I passed on that, the general information to Mr. DiMartino and Councilman Rosenbaum just before the meeting, um, in order to briefly discuss it. My recommendation at this point, if you're okay with funds in order to cover, um, Mr. Wright's invoices, I would say we table this for now until we can have a chance to discuss it further. Uh, Mr. DiMartino, do you agree?
Well, I would recommend a little bit different path, but the same thing. I would recommend that you fund it, but that you give direction to the, to the commission not to pay the bill until this is sorted out. I mean, they're the, you know, they're the ones who contracted. Um, so, um, I, that would be my recommendation. I understand that there's, in speaking with folks at MS4, that there are some issues with her billing and she's going to have to answer it. And so we're just going to have to dispute that bill, but that's not really our role unless we're asked to.
I would accept that amendment to my motion.
If that works for you all, I think that would be a better path.
Appreciate the guidance. So.
Okay.
I don't know who said it, but I would accept the amendment.
You would accept the amendment and the amendment being that we would, uh, fund it and then, uh, suggest to, um, uh, MS4 and the commission to review? Okay, so.
And legal, are legal as well.
Are legal, okay. So we have, uh, it amended by Mr. Cunningham and agreed to by the second, Mark Yudowski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those nays? Motion carries. Moving on to Lepore Superior Court, number one, also a transfer. From the 1,003,007 account maintenance contracts to 1,002,048 bail of supplies, $200. I'm also going to group in an account transfer from 100, 1,000.3007 maintenance contracts to office. Why is, uh, there's two separate ones for the same thing? Oh, bail of supplies, I'm sorry. 2048, the first one for 200 was bail of supplies. The second one is 1,002,001 office supplies for 300, total of $500.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion, uh, any nays? Motion carries. Lepore County Community Corrections, requesting account transfers from the following accounts to 91062001, which is an office supplies to purchase books for participants in office supplies. So they're going to transfer out of 9106, uh, point 10201, which is field officer $6,000. 9106.10202, which is residential officer $6,000. 9106.10207, which is a coordinator of services, $3,000. 9106.1107, which is OASDI withheld, which is social security of $8,000 for a combined total of $23,000.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
This is all in your grant fund?
Yeah.
Okay. All, uh, any other further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Requesting an account transfer from 9106.1109, which is employee health insurance to 9106.30135, professional services for GPS devices in the amount of $35,000. Do I have a motion for the transfer?
Motion approved.
Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second. Quick question.
Uh, discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Is, are these replacement? Replacement devices? Replacement devices are the additional devices of the service contracts?
Um, no, actually, we came before you a couple of months ago asking for additional funding for GPS. And what happened is when, um, me and my administrative coordinator met with, um, DOC, we found out we had a lot of money that we needed to spend because it wasn't allocated appropriately under the previous director. And so we're going to try and spend our own money instead of spending the money that you gave us for lit. So we had $35,000, so they'll keep money back.
All right.
Good answer.
That's what we're trying to do.
Kudos.
I think that, uh, I think that probably answers my question, but you're, so you're seeing there was unnecessary amount of funds built up in employee, um, health insurance.
Correct.
Account. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, one more question? Sorry, Ms. Yudowski?
Well, I'm not being a question. I know that made the statement last time. This has nothing to do with you. I still have a problem with the judge is not asking for the money back from, is my mic on, using the GPS?
Is your mic on?
Sorry, not using the program, so I can't support it because of that reason. Go ahead.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to Lepore County Auditor's Office, the first of two. It's requesting a fund-to-fund transfer from Riverboat 1191 to the Rainy Day Fund 1186 for the October Riverboat emissions tax, 50% of $359,582. And the amount that would be the transfer is $179,750, $179,750.41.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve and we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Uh, going down to, which was very confusing when I added it, was there was two, there was two $500 transfers. One to reverse what went into educational instruction, uh, and training instead of going into lease bond payment. So the first part is, we're going to take out of the educational, uh, instruction training, uh, which is account 30027, $500, and put it back into office supplies 20001. Where you're then, second part of this is we're then going to take it out of office supplies in the amount of $500 and put it in, and that's 2001 account. And we're going to put it in 40122, which is the lease bond payment account.
Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Okay, we move to Lepore County Hazmat, requesting appropriation and local emergency planning and right-to-know fund 1152 for miscellaneous claims 20200 in the amount of $25,000.
What is the purpose of those miscellaneous claims?
This is one of those that have never been appropriated before. So we were talking with the department heads about appropriating. So I believe he just picked a general number, um, within his fund to be appropriated for use.
Right. The emergency, the, the emergency planning right-to-know fund is under the Hazmat Director, so it's his fund, so.
It's his fund, but it has to be appropriated by council.
He's appropriating $25,000 of it.
He's requesting two, yes.
Any further?
If you look at the bottom of this same page, uh, the sheriff is requesting appropriation for miscellaneous claims. And it says laundry machine and repair dishwasher. There's some purpose. I mean, I'm not comfortable just transferring $25,000. I have no idea what we're transferring it for.
Yeah, this is one of those that they've always done themselves. They didn't know that the state requires the council to approve it. So, um, for the rest of the year, anywhere you see that, or for the rest of the last 30 years, I hear, wherever you see that, um, they have been doing it on their own. So it, now it's just a matter of formal.
A board of accounts has not recognized that in the last 25 or 30 years.
Uh, nope, not, not according to the people who've told me.
Is this to correct this fund?
It is to have it appropriated so that the accounts are not negative. Um, but I honestly don't think that he has anything for those yet. It was just getting ready for it. Um, so he'll probably, unless he has claims, he'll have to come back in January and ask for the same to be done.
Would it not be better for him to put it into other recognized, like, account categories like?
Yeah.
Office supplies or postage or whatever.
I was wondering if it was just a fund shortage that he's transferring out of there for?
No. No, just to be, just to have it appropriated.
Motion denied.
It is.
We had a motion to approve, so just give us a second.
What was your question, Mr. Keel? I'm sorry.
I'm going to withdraw my motion to approve and I'm going to enter a motion to table.
We have a, a, a motion to table on the floor. So I have a second to that motion. So I have a new motion, which is a, a, a motion to table. Mr. Yudowski, you with a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we have a motion to table. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays? It's tabled. Uh, Lepore County Juvenile Probation Department requesting appropriation and juvenile probation user fees fund, 2511 for $4,000 for miscellaneous claims.
I guess we'll table this one too then, won't we?
So again, this is one of those that, uh, I think what Councilman asked a minute ago, if you don't mind me answering, for whatever reason, in the system, uh, someone in the past 30 years has started an account called 20200 miscellaneous claims. Instead of it being put into 200 for supplies, 300 accounts for services and charges, 400 accounts for capital outlay. Why, I don't know, but yes, the, the State Board of Accounts will see it this year, um, and will have us get rid of that to start using the correct numbers.
Yes, please.
How come we didn't see it during budget hearings? I don't remember.
Because it's not a, it's not a budgeted account. 20200 isn't. That's what I'm saying is the accounts that you're seeing this on have never been budgeted. Um, one, one meeting, I believe a council member said it's their own funds. Why would we tell them how to use it? So they've always just used it without council approval. So for you to table it, it's fine with me, of course, um, but they've been using it how they chose to for the last 30 years, according to the department.
Motion to table.
Second. Where you have a, yeah. Let's go with the question that was just before your motion.
I had my hand up, but.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry if you.
Go ahead.
President, um, just real quick. Yes, we did ask. Every time we had people come up, we go, is there any funds? I do never remember this brought, brought up in two episodes. So no, we did, the council had asked. Nope, we never got answered. Are there, everybody came up and we said, are there any additional monies or funds that they have? So those were questions were asked throughout the whole budgetary process. We, and so we weren't given a lot of this information like this.
But these aren't budgeted funds.
I didn't say budget funds. We didn't ask that question.
You're talking about.
Every time, every time somebody came up, I remember Mr. Cunningham brought it up more than once. I brought it up twice. We need, we, we asked, are there any other funds that they have? We need, we, we asked, are there any other funds that they have available, available that we can use? It was always none. So you, you made that statement, that's not a right statement, because we asked those questions.
No, what I'm talking about, that's not what I was referring to, but what I said was, but it's different than what he was talking about, so you're welcome to that, what I said stands.
Any other monies they have? This is a question that we asked, this was, this was reference to those.
Okay. Well, ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. Novak?
Can I just, I just, how is it that the juvenile center has miscellaneous claims?
That isn't juvenile center, but.
No, no, I'm going back though.
Okay.
Two oh, two hundred, and then the Hazmat has two oh, two hundred.
That's what I explained a minute ago, it was just a number that someone made up years ago.
How, how does? They're in the same, different departments?
The, it's literally called miscellaneous claims, so every.
And then they're separated within that?
It's separated by.
There's nothing separated in it, each, each of the funds that are not budgeted have that line item, that they've always transferred it to themselves. So you'll see that in eleven, even in the, the lit, or not lit, the rainy day fund where the commissioners did, it was in two oh, two hundred instead of a four hundred number for capital outlay.
I'll second Mr. Novak's motion.
So we have a motion to table?
Second.
And a second?
And if I may ask, this is one of those.
No, no, we're, if you can just give me a moment, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries, we're no longer discussing this one. Uh, moving to LaPorte County Health Department requesting appropriation in communicable disease for miscellaneous.
Can I just ask for clear, are, are any of these to correct the fund? Did you know of, because I know maybe somebody's fund was out of balance, I know if we go down to the animal shelter.
It should all be in your notes, I can go through and look, but I don't have it memorized.
The animal shelter, it says miscellaneous claims, but it's because at the beginning of the year, they never got their donation fund appropriated. So they've spent all that money.
These are, or they appropriated, uh, but it's not necessarily, it may be corrections without looking. But it's exactly what the animal shelter is doing, yes. It just may not be to correct a negative.
The funds have been spent.
I don't know about all cases without looking at your notes, animal shelter, yes, all but four thousand have. This is one of those things where the departments were asking what they need to do, uh, what you're going to expect in the future. President Rosenbaum, so that's.
Amanda's on that.
Whatever they're required, I'd be happy to let them know, so we do it correctly.
Go ahead, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to look up something on a fund balance.
Amanda?
Yes, sir.
Can you explain what that, the request for the communicable diseases?
The communicable disease account is our non-reverting, um, for our nursing department. So that is, we take that and we, that's the money we use for supplies and for vaccines. So we've just, again, like, what, we're on this scene, we've always just been out of it, not knowing that we had to get permission to appropriate it, to spend it, so that fifteen thousand just makes that, will make us, make it whole.
So what is the fifteen thousand for?
I just looked at the same thing. I don't know. She's supposed to make it whole like everything else.
Yeah, so all over, again, of most of it would, is nursing supplies, vaccines, that's the money, that's the account we use to purchase our vaccines.
Is it negative already, is what he's asking?
Is the fifteen thousand dollars to bring it back to a even?
Correct, that'll take us even through to the end of the year.
Which would mean that it's currently negative.
I don't have a.
So I have the money sitting in, in, in the cash account, we pay out the two zero two hundred claims within that ninety-one sixty-seven communicable disease. So it's not being it from the cash into that where we actually pay out of it.
So it may not be because the.
How I understand it.
They have it available to spend the rest of this year, which is what all of them were doing, because you're not meeting again this year.
So if that's the case, Mr. President, I make a motion to table.
We have a motion on the floor, which I have to recognize, sorry, I was trying to look something up quickly, but, uh, we have a motion, is there anybody wishes to second that motion?
Second.
We have a motion as second, therefore I have to call for it, and this is just the first fifteen thousand dollars.
Just real quick, the only reason why the mo-, the motion came up is because, no, sorry, I can't even talk about it, everyone go. Sorry. Sorry, discussion?
No, there's no discussion, we can do.
Unless you'd like to rescind your motion.
I can, if you guys want to discuss some more. I don't know what else to discuss, but.
Again, do you, you're good, okay. All those that would like to table the first fifteen thousand dollars from the communicable disease fund, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Yagelski, and who was the second, I'm sorry?
Cook.
Adam.
Thank you.
Hey, Katie.
We're moving down to requesting.
You didn't call for the nays.
Oh, sorry, nays, any nays?
Nay.
Okay.
Mr. President. Um, Mr. President, roll call.
Roll call, please, it's too close, and if somebody cares to change.
Councilman Mullenhour?
Nay.
Councilman Cronka?
Aye.
Councilman Novak?
Nay.
Councilman Rosenbaum?
I'm actually going to change my vote to nay.
Councilman Keel?
Nay.
Councilman Yagelski?
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham?
Aye.
Three yeses, four nos.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Table.
This is not table, then I can talk.
It's not table, so now we can talk about that.
So, just so, I hope you understand that, once she made the statement, it's not a negative balance. All it was is doing the same thing we did with the other two accounts, she said that just now, that it wasn't a negative balance.
I'm going to check it if that's.
Gee, I, I don't know that we got a absolute confirmation on that.
You can re, do the tapes when you see it.
Do you have enough money? You're going to be negative before you get to the end of the year, correct, Amanda?
She is negative ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-two cents in the miscellaneous claims, because nothing has ever been appropriated. That is probably the case of all of those that have been tabled.
But you're two.
Period.
How long would it take us to?
Funds through the end of the year.
Well, I guess we could deal with this at the December eleventh meeting, right?
That's good.
I mean, we, we can't be ending the year with negative balances in these accounts, so at some point, we got to do something about it.
Yeah, for thirty years.
We're currently at minus ten thousand, and we got thirty thousand going in.
In July?
January.
We take one from.
I shook what, I'm sorry?
From her non-reverting, and table the twelve oh six.
Thirty years has got to be done tonight.
Getting updated the next meeting.
I'm sorry, which account are we talking about again? Which one are we on, the communicable disease?
So, yes, so talking about two seven oh four, potentially making a motion to approve the twenty-seven oh four to, from out of communicable disease to miscellaneous claims in order to make you whole, from, get you out of the negative now. And then table the twelve oh six and discuss that in December.
Okay.
Is, is you, are you trying to put another fifteen thousand into miscellaneous claims so that you're not negative total of thirty thousand?
Two different funds.
Well, they're coming from two different funds, but they're going to the same.
I'm trying to put it in fifteen thousand, so I have the, to pay off the ten that I'm in the hole, but to keep me in case I have something at the end of the year, if I have to buy another bulk, if I get short in a vaccine, I have enough money there to pay for it before the end of the year.
Just out of clarification, what happens to the money if she doesn't spend it, it goes back, it stays in that account?
Correct, yeah, correct.
It's a, it's a, it's her, it's her non-reverting fund, but the. It's her non-reverting, though, it's not a general fund item that is.
And fifteen thousand is going into each fund, is being appropriated within each fund, it's not thirty to one place. It's fifteen and fifteen.
I don't understand.
And eighteen and forty.
What would the council like to do?
I'm making a motion, uh, to appropriate for the fifteen thousand out of communicable disease for miscellaneous claims. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Five two is my understanding on the vote. Thank you, sir, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, moving to the next one, requesting appropriation in Indiana Health Department Trust Fund, twelve oh six for miscellaneous claims twenty-two, miscellaneous claims account two zero two hundred for another fifteen thousand dollars. What would the council like to do?
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
She doesn't spend it, it's, goes back in there.
I'll second.
And the balance is currently negative?
In that account, it is negative nine thousand, seven hundred forty-three dollars and forty-eight cents, correct?
Okay, we have a motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
We have.
Order three.
Three nays. Four three, motion carries. Requesting an appropriation in local health maintenance fund nine one six seven for OASDI eleven oh seven two thousand, Medicare eleven oh nine four hundred, perf eleven oh one seven five thousand, employee health insurance eleven oh one nine for eleven thousand, for a total of eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second with a question.
And a second, by Mr. Keel? And your question, sir?
Yeah, so I'm noticing that we were, we obviously didn't appropriate enough money in for perf, OASDI, Medicare, that sort of thing. Um, have we corrected this for budget year twenty twenty-four? Or is this going to be short again in twenty twenty-four?
This account goes away next year, this is one of the, um, uh, legacy funds that will disappear and is being replaced by the, um, Health First Indiana Funds.
Funding.
Okay, so when you budgeted the Health First Indiana Funds, you made sure that the, the perf and OASDI and Medicare was, was set at an appropriate level to cover all those expenses, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
One other quick question, isn't ninety-one sixty-seven a grant fund?
It's not a grant, it's a, it's funding, it's legislative funding.
Okay, so not entirely covered.
So we have a motion on the floor, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, five two, thank you. Moving on, requesting appropriation, County Health Department Fund eleven fifty-nine for employee health insurance eleven oh one nine in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second?
Question.
Sir, go ahead.
So the employee health insurance, I, I refreshed my memory, I kind of, is this additional insurance that we have from the county?
They pay, um, the regular help, uh, medical insurance out of this account, I believe, for those employees.
Is this the same insurance that we have the county has?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just the amount that they're paying.
Yeah, they're paying, yes.
Good one, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Five two, thank you, motion carries. LaPorte County Animal Small Animal Shelter. Yes, sir.
Before we proceed, I'd like to make a motion to re, remove the LaPorte County Juvenile Probation from the table.
We have a motion to remove it from table?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries.
Now, my question is, uh, can, Rhonda, can you look up and tell us what they're in the negative? Twenty-one, twenty-five, eleven. We just spent eighty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars in the Health Department after tabling a four thousand dollar request for the same reason, is that we didn't know whether they were in red or not.
Yep, you did. Their miscellaneous claims are currently negative one thousand, five hundred, thirteen dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Thank you, motion to approve. Four thousand dollar transfer to miscellaneous two oh two zero zero.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mullenhour and Mr. Cunningham. Um, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion to remove, uh, LaPorte County Hazmat from the table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
With Mr. Cunningham in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Would you look up the balance on that one as well?
If I can make a statement, uh, something Mr. Keel asked, well, it's, it takes a minute for it to come up, but while we're waiting, in eleven fifty-nine, the forty thousand that we just transferred for health insurance, when I look at next year, the budget went from three forty-eight to two ten, two hundred and ten thousand. Um, so I'll be curious if that's enough for her, just to show you that it changed.
Amanda?
Yes, sir, that's because half of my staff is being moved to Health First Indiana Funds. So that's why that number went down, because it's going to be on the other fund, not the eleven fifty-nine for insurance.
Thank you, and yes, Hazmat is currently negative six thousand, seven fifty-two, eighty-seven in their claims.
Second.
I'm sorry, there was a motion and a second to approve the twenty-five thousand dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nays?
Nay.
Okay, well now, we're going to move down to LaPorte County Small Animal Shelter. Uh, we have a requesting appropriation in the Animal Shelter Donation Fund forty-one hundred to miscellaneous claims two, two hundred in the amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents, which matches the amount in that account.
So for clarification, at the beginning of the year, this fund, the money in the donation fund was never appropriated. They've spent it, but it was never appropriated, so that money is gone, we're just.
Cleaning it up.
Paperwork.
Which is the same for all of the other ones.
And then, and then the next claim for fourteen thousand dollars is because the one forty-three, three thirty-three is gone, he needs fourteen thousand dollars left, because they've used up all the donation fund to get him through the end of the year.
So we are right now just doing the first one, the one hundred forty-three thousand, because it's.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Well, um, any discussion?
Do we know what, what was the one hundred forty-three thousand spent on, out of the donation fund, what, what did it go towards? Operations and social?
They covered vet care.
Vet thing we talked about in the meeting.
Yeah, and the vet costs is significant, we were getting a great deal by the, the former vet that was doing it, so.
The.
So we have a motion for further discussion, sorry.
I had something, but I'll listen.
Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries.
So, oh, the, the one thing that I would request is miscellaneous claims, is there a way to, when some, somebody sends you something that just says for miscellaneous claims, you need to be specific?
We will work on that. Yeah.
We should not, I mean, yeah.
Two zero two hundred miscellaneous claims will not exist in twenty twenty-four, we'll get it corrected.
Good, all right, won't have to go through this.
For the state.
Requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat, wind tax, or ARP funds for miscellaneous claims two, twenty, two hundred for fourteen thousand, that's to carry them to the rest of the year, as Mr. Novak had discussed, which, uh, so someone needs to make a motion, decide out of where?
Riverboat?
Riverboat, so one, two, wind tax is at six, six seventy-seven.
Someone pick?
Your call.
Mike?
Riverboat.
Do you second it?
So we have a motion from Mr. Mullenhour?
Yep.
And we have a second from Mr. Cronka? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays?
Nay. Nay.
And I'm sorry, where was that from?
Riverboat. Riverboat.
We move on to LaPorte County Coroner requesting appropriation from the Coroner Non-Reverting Fund two oh five three for miscellaneous claims two oh two hundred for deputy training and travel for two thousand, one hundred fifty dollars for miscellaneous claims two oh two hundred equipment, fifty-two hundred dollars for a total of seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion?
Discussion that fifty-two hundred dollars for equipment is probably going to be reimbursed by.
Yes, I think she did have that in her letter thing.
Correct. And I just want to say kudos because it says miscellaneous claims, but then next to it, it gives a description which.
She had that in her letter.
Actually for body bags.
Yeah.
I didn't want to write that, but yes.
I understand. Using a lot of body bags in Laporte County.
All right.
Okay, so we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Requesting additional appropriations from Riverboat, Wintax, or A R P for toxology costs three oh three, three zero zero three one for three thousand dollars and for X-ray lab and morgue, three zero zero three two for nine thousand dollars for a total of twelve thousand.
I may. Isaiah's on to the coroner. I spoke with her on this since she wasn't going to be able to be here. Both of those costs are incurred due to excess toxicology testing and lots of basically morgue services at other counties outside where accidents occurred within the county and transfers to outside counties where the morgue services were provided.
So we cannot control those costs and it's my understanding that there may be additional funding on December eleventh also. But right now, dealing with this twelve thousand, what would the council like to do and where would they like to take the money from?
Motion to approve out of Riverboat. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays? Five, two. Motion carries. Moving to Laporte County Sheriff's Office, requesting motion of support for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four patrol vehicles and equipment two zero zero one six. It was not included in the budget for six hundred and eighty, not to exceed six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. These are all, need to be ordered early and we're expecting to, my understanding, we're expecting to get them by the end of twenty twenty-four. It's just that we need to order them sooner than later.
Which, Mr. President, motion to, motion for support for.
We have a motion of support so they can go order them. Do I have a second?
Which fund are you wishing to?
They have their own fund. They have, this is.
No.
Nope.
Believe it'd be coming out of the.
We either did come out of public safety lit and prior to public safety lit, we took it out of economic lit.
We had a fund that we used for that.
We, we got it. There was also a capital, capital improvement.
The old C C D.
The old C C D.
Yeah, the C C D. That's where we used to pay it from.
There's only one fund to take it from.
Oh, the C C D fund.
It could be from P S Lit too.
We don't have enough money in the P S Lit.
No, we do. It'll just run very low.
And at the moment. At the moment, P S Lit's at one fifty-five.
Notice it's by for the end of next year. You got to remember with all the money coming in, it was anticipated based upon all this. This is, let me just, we had a discussion previously, so real quick. This is after the six eighty-five that you told me what the ending, what that number would be about. So we do have the money. My misstatement. So we have a motion of support and it's out of public safety lit. Am I correct?
That's what it was, yes.
Okay, and did we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keel. Any discussion?
Same question I asked before, just to make sure that the, that the consideration of the used cars gets in front of the council.
Okay, so that's also part of it to request. So, any other discussion? One other reminder, this should be encumbered.
It's not encumbered, it's a favor of.
Okay, so when it comes up, then we'll have to.
Which would be nice.
Probably be preferable to appropriate it in January then, so it's taken care of.
We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye. Any nays?
Oh, sorry, aye.
Okay, six one. Requesting appropriation misdemeanor fund eleven seventy-five for miscellaneous claims two oh two hundred. It's for a laundry machine and repair to the dishwasher. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Laporte County Council requesting additional appropriation from A R P for bonus correction. Eleven nine zero one account, thirty-six thousand seven hundred ten dollars and forty-three cents. Employee bonus eleven nine oh one for a thousand dollars for a total of thirty-seven thousand seven hundred ten dollars and forty-three cents. We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Question.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm gonna have to kind of combine both of these around here. So, we gave a thousand dollar bonus. Did anyone in council say that we were given a thousand dollars plus we were paying the taxes on it?
So, so I talked around it before the meeting and I didn't get a chance to talk to Earl. It's the, it's the employer's contribution on top of that. So in other words, we have to pay perf on that bonus. And they're paying, also paying our portion of.
Included in the thirty-six thousand seven hundred ten dollars.
Yeah, it was under budgeted because of those things, but it's always been paid out of that.
So perf and you got.
Not that it was under budgeted, it's just that it wasn't figured in the first place. If, if we have to pay it today, we had to pay it when we gave the bonus and they should have known what it was going to cost us.
Right. That was my point.
Is that correct? I mean, it's not something new.
I'm just giving thousand dollar bonuses before.
Now, this is just the.
Correct.
An amount.
My point is this. The council, we knew exactly what it was going to cost us to give thousand dollar bonuses and five hundred dollar bonuses.
Yes.
But in reality, it cost us another fifteen or sixteen percent because.
Because it's perf and all the other department didn't add that in.
I guess the thing that we'd need to ask Guy Di Martino, whose birthday it is today.
I didn't get to say happy birthday, so I'm saying happy.
Is it possible to check into, see, if we give a thousand dollar bonus, that it's a thousand dollar bonus, that it is not, in other words?
No, it's considered payroll.
All right. So there's the answer.
And anytime you take it out of a different fund, the deductions do come out of that fund as well.
So we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Five, two. Okay, motion carries. Laporte County Courts requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or Wintax or A R P for jury pay fund correction twenty-five oh six seventy-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-six thousand thirty-four cents. I believe that's the amount that's in the red. And for future jury fees to get them through the end of the year, the twenty thousand two hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-six cents for a total of a hundred thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion. But I, I have a question, so.
Well, which fund would you like to take it out of? Wintax or Riverboat?
I'd probably still stay with Riverboat.
Okay, Riverboat. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Question. Whose, whose budget is this going to show up in next year?
No one's. The council did not budget it in anyone's budget this year either. So we'll have to get it fixed.
So we'll need to budget it in the future, again, next year? Additional appropriation.
You'll have to appropriate it next year and then in June, we can work on twenty twenty-five.
Add it to the budget.
If you choose to.
Can we add this to a list of things that need to be appropriated in January?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Our office will now monitor it as well, so we'll have it for you.
Feel free to look and see if there's any other ones of these laying around.
Is there any other discussion?
Is this, is this year-to-date? Is this June to November?
It's year-to-date, so.
But it's been in the rears for quite a while.
Well, for the whole year. It has been corrected in years past because the, they have pulled it from general fund per, they have written down per judge's orders. So it's always been pulled out of general fund, unappropriated funds. But it does need council approval and if you want it from there, then great, but it's been unexpected from general for those last.
No disrespect to any judge, I didn't know they could pull out of the general fund like that.
Well, it's not so many judges, it's our office that was doing it, saying that they requested it.
You know what I'm saying?
It's a council.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Four, three. Laporte County Regional Sewer Board requesting an additional appropriation from Riverboat, Wintax, or A R P for Hudson Saucony Lake Projects, one point five million dollars. Sir, we're going to need you to come up.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion at this time due to the questions with our budget and A R P money. That we're going to table this to a, our next meeting.
I second that.
So, instead of.
Easy.
Best thing we could do.
Is that going to create problems or?
Is that, your time is for you. Is that a problem for you?
No, I think that'll be okay.
Talking about tabling until December or January?
It'll probably be at the January meeting.
I still think would be okay. So right, right now, what we're, we're, the only deadline we're working with against right now.
We could ask the question so we can.
We are trying to continue our dialogue with the State Revolving Loan Fund, Indiana Finance Authority.
The question.
And their, one of their scoring criteria for the subsidization that they will apply to the project is what we can garner from local allocation from A R P.
I stand with my motion.
Okay, so I have a motion, but I don't have a second. I'm sorry, thank you, sir. All those in favor to table, please say aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Laporte County Board of Commissioners requesting an additional appropriation from Riverboat eleven ninety-one or Wintax forty-two twenty or A R P eighty-nine fifty, eighty-nine fifty-one for unemployment compensation account. Twenty-six thousand to put into secretary payroll, two thousand eight oh four sixty to put in part-time payroll, one oh one three oh three thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars. Legal fees, three oh oh two oh account. One hundred twenty thousand dollars. Educational instructional training, three zero zero two seven, ten thousand dollars. Here's the O A S D I eleven oh zero zero seven. One hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred seventy-four and two cents. Medicare eleven oh oh nine, forty-seven thousand three thirty-four and sixty-two cents. Perf eleven oh one seven, four hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Liability Insurance Correction Fund forty-seven oh one, five hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-five cents.
Are we considering these all together or individually?
Might as well put them all together. That's not going to make much of a difference, is it?
Maybe.
Discuss first before we start making motions.
To what?
Discuss first.
I think we need, yeah, we need to discuss how we'd like to handle it.
Are these accounts in the negative? Any of them?
Without looking, if they're not, they're close, but definitely, working from the bottom up. The liability, yes. I do believe perf, Medicare, and O A S D I are, yes. I don't think educational training is without looking at it. Legal fees is not right now. But I think it had thirty-eight cents or three dollars. It's a very small amount. The secretary and part-time payroll, I don't know if they're negative, but they will be before the end of the year because of the differences. And unemployment compensation is in the negative currently, yes.
We have in front of us Commissioner Connie Graham Rosso. You're holding up a sheet in front of you. Is there any additional information?
My accounts here. And so, I mean, I can tell you what's in the negative and what's not in the negative. Our educational fund, what happened there was they were pulling it out of our educational fund instead of the perpetuation fund that they usually pull it out of in the recorders. So that's how we ended up with the ten thousand dollars for that one. And everybody's going away starting, some of them have left already tonight and leaving tomorrow. So we're not going to have enough money to cover all, everybody that's going on the conference starting tomorrow. So that's why we're asking for the ten thousand on that one. The part-time, we had an increase for Joe Gallic. We have Eduardo training right now. And then, when our secretary came back, her rate was higher. And so we ended up with a deficit on that one.
Can I ask a question on that? When we did the twenty twenty, well, not, we, I wasn't there, but when the twenty twenty-three budget was done, the assumption was at that time Diane Gonzalez was in the position, her level of years of service and comet level was, I presume, figured out. So how did it end up more expensive?
Because what happened was, as soon as we went into the new year, they pulled out that extra money. So whether it was done on the council or whether it was done in the auditor's office, I don't know exactly who pulled the money out of our budget. But they immediately pulled that money out of our budget. So that's how we ended up on shortage there.
The budgets also didn't roll over until February because they were waiting for that ten percent to be done, to where I think it was adjusted because Deborah was already here. So I did look that up previously.
Mr. President.
She didn't.
Are you done, Mr. Keel?
Yes, sir.
You made a statement, when your secretary came back, she got additional money. What was that for?
Well, because we had to put her back at the rate that she was at.
She just means compared to Deborah, not that she got more than.
She didn't get the bump that was originally.
She never got the bump that. We'll have to talk about it at a later date because that was tabled. I mean, I saw that they passed for Judge Alvisos.
But it's for something different. We don't know what that was. It's not because one person got it, the other person don't get it because you have that, okay, yes.
But in Diane's case, I mean, now she's taking on the credit card payments and I mean, she's doing even more so than what she's doing before, but.
Not today.
Okay, so how would the council like to do?
Well, she was kind of working, the commissioner was working through the different explanations. I think you're up to legal fees.
Okay, as far as the legal fees.
When they went from one fifty to one seventy-five an hour.
Yeah, but that didn't make the whole difference. I mean, the reality is, is we've had more.
That would only be a small amount. Well, part of this is after, I spoke with Commissioner Graham Rosso earlier today and actually spoke with Attorney Pcheck and reviewed where there's a lot of consulting and litigation going on that's not just within his office. So that whenever there's something like that that comes up, let's say, like Attorney Di Martino's role in the annex stuff. All of those buildings come across this particular line item.
And that was not something that's normally budgeted.
It's normally year in and year out, the fifth year I've been on here and we've always had a fund that towards the end of the year based upon the amount of litigation.
This is actually not a large, we've had much larger.
Yeah, we've had pretty large numbers.
So are we anticipating that in future years, that line item needs to be larger than the two hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Well, I mean, there's, you, you never know how much litigation we're going to end up in from year to year. You know, they've said it, the, the number one thing that really hurt us was the flood.
So we had two hundred and forty thousand dollars budgeted to that account. My impression is there was maybe some money transferred in at some point. Does that sound right? I don't know where, but at some point where there are transfers into legal services. Regardless, two hundred forty thousand was the starting amount. Maybe it went up some. We're now increasing that fifty percent with one month left in the year. Are we anticipating a full hundred and twenty thousand dollars of legal bills in the next one month? Or are they like pending, waiting for money to be appropriated there?
Or it might be negative.
Was that, was that a yep by Mr. Di Martino?
A yes by Mr. Di.
I have not.
I mean, I can go through the line items and tell you exactly how much each person's bill is that we, you know, we have outstanding, but I mean.
It's not necessary, but.
I was trying to say something.
Mr. Di Martino?
Yes, I have not submitted the water law, my water loss bill or the email bill, so.
That's true, so those two other ones that.
You anticipate doing that by the end of the year?
I will, I will do my best. Yes. If you, if you'd rather have it by the end of the year, yes.
Yes, sir.
I have no problem with the, if you put up all the top together, can we at least separate the rainy day, one million dollars, because that's a different.
I'm not doing the twenty-nine thousand eight hundred or the one million. We're doing those separately.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
So the total amount I added it up was one million three hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-four cents for everything that we just discussed from the twenty, not to exceed twenty-six thousand to five hundred and thirty-four. No one has yet to mention it because we don't have a motion on the floor yet.
I think that was, Mr. Yagowski made a motion.
What's that? No, 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 I did. No, sorry, I did.
Well, we no longer have all of that Riverboat.
I can tell you I've got thirty-three dollars and ninety, ninety-three cents.
So we can deduct this by.
That'll, that'll get you what, fifteen minutes of work? Ten minutes of work?
She's done the math and she needs that. Yeah, I need it, yes.
I hate to say it, but looking at the balances right now and the intensive A R P. I hate to say it, but looking at the balances right now and the intensive ARP, which would be more, in my, in my opinion, based off of infrastructure and capital improvements and projects of that nature, that's the only fund that's able to handle this amount.
Well, you can also, you can split it.
We split it.
And.
Take the six seventy on the.
Six seventy-seven available in wind tax.
That'll wipe it out. So if you took one out of Riverboat and one out of ARP.
Could you repeat that total when you get the funds?
Yeah, one million, three six seven, six seven two, point two four.
Thank you.
And now there was a question about if we separate out the six seventy, what would that be? So I'm just gonna try and get that number.
What you're doing, that, a question for Ms. Graves. The, the issue that we had under budgeted for OSDI, Medicare, and perf. Back in the budgeting process, I think we agreed to add an extra ten percent. Was that the right amount?
Yes.
Has payroll determined if that was enough? Did we, did we budget enough for that, or are we gonna come up short in twenty-twenty-four as well?
Isn't it?
I feel like that we discovered that it was enough, but they will watch it monthly.
Okay.
So we'll let you know, but I think that once we got it all figured out, I believe that it was enough.
It was a fair number.
Yeah, I think.
Now, if there's, like, if there's unexpected, that, that they could cause, then of course we have to reappropriate it.
Yeah, short of new employees or filling vacant spots, it shouldn't be unexpected, but we'll watch that each month.
Thank you.
And I can tell you we're over three hundred thousand in payroll.
In the red?
In, we, yes.
Yeah.
When it comes to like, you know, the medic, Medicare withholdings and all the withholdings.
Six hundred and seventy thousand actually is what we have, or did have. That's not true, I'm sorry. That's to get you through the end of the year. I apologize. That's what they average in payroll.
Yeah, cause right now I'm, I'm at three.
So six seventy should be good.
Just give me a second more for something. I still, I, I rechecked the one point three million. However, if we wanna break that up, we want to separate the OSDI, Medicare, and perf, which is six hundred and seventy thousand, seven fifty-four twenty-nine. The remaining is six ninety-six, nine one seven point nine five. That can come from the other fund. And even though we have spent money out of the other fund, there's still, there's still enough money left, I believe. We're gonna take that out. So what would the council like to do?
Is there a fund you're recommending?
Well, there's only.
There's, in, in the wind taxes, six hundred and seventy, there's, there's enough, there's, wipe it out, but there's six hundred and seventy dollars, seven fifty-four twenty-nine, can be with, taken from there because the amount in that balance is like six hundred and seventy-six thousand, someone said.
Six seventy-seven, five twenty-one.
Six seventy-seven, so.
Unless you took half of that, six seventy, half from Riverboat and half from Wind Tax. And then you turn around and you do the other one out of.
ARP.
ARP. That's the only other count we got.
I don't care how we break it down, so I just wanna.
That way you're not draining one completely, I guess. It doesn't matter, six one half dozen the other. I don't care.
Unless someone's got a better idea, I'm gonna make a motion to do the twenty-six thousand for unemployment compensation, the six thousand for secretary payroll. I'm rounding numbers here. Twelve, hundred twenty thousand for legal fees. Ten thousand for educational instruction training and the six seventy for the OSDI, Medicare, and perf, all out of Riverboat, and then the remaining five hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-five cents for the liability insurance correction fund out of Wind Tax. Unless someone wants to pitch something different. Is that?
I'm just, just breaking out the numbers for a second.
So.
So it's eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine seventeen point nine five. You're suggesting that we take from Riverboat and from Wind Tax, we take five thirty-four, six seventy-four, thirty-five is your motion?
Correct.
Does anybody like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, is there any discussion, further discussion? Sorry, don't mean to cut that off. If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay. So it's a four-three.
And you did say everything from Riverboat except for the last one, which is ARP, correct?
Uh, Wind Tax.
Wind Tax.
Wind Tax, I'm sorry, thank you.
So.
If you're keeping tab over there, new updates on the remaining balances in those, in Wind Tax and Riverboat would be great. Now, we only have two more items, so.
No, we also have economic lit, we can take things from.
True.
Requesting additional appropriation from Lit Economic Development, eleven twelve, or Riverboat eleven ninety-one, or Wind Tax forty-two twenty, or ARP eighty-nine fifty fifty-one. Demolition of house in Michigan City next to the EMS building, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
Motion approved by the LIT Economic Development.
Totally agree. So we have a motion and a second. Yes, sir.
Ms. Graham Rosso, the auditor said they never received a bill from.
No, we, we have it. We've submitted it. We, you know.
Submitted.
They said that it was not, we submitted it and they said it was not appropriated by the council.
Oh, and then it was. She, you're talking about the twenty-nine eight, right?
Absolutely, that's what.
We do not have that one. That is correct.
That's what I'm talking about.
We have not received the twenty-nine eight.
We sent it to you and it was kicked back because you told us that we had to, we had to get it approved that the council, wasn't approved by the council.
That was, that was a while ago.
I mean, if it wasn't approved, then yes, it definitely needed.
Wait, 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 that's all, no, we don't want to change the story, but I asked you earlier, I want us to keep on the facts here. You said you did not receive a bill. She said she did receive, because I did talk to you, you did receive a bill, but you kicked it back. So if you received the bill, can we use that date and can we pay this bill tomorrow? Like we said, mentioned earlier, because you did receive the bill, you kicked it back to the commissioners.
I'm not familiar with that process, but what I told you earlier was regardless of that process, because it was dated for November first, we could put it with those and pay December eighth. That's what I told you prior to the meeting. But no, I'm not aware of that.
They would have got the bill, you said you could have expedited it.
I, no, I didn't. We can't expedite that. That's, I said it's, no, I didn't.
All right.
I didn't actually.
Excuse me, the auditor is here, Tim Staples. We cannot expedite the claim. The commissioners have to approve the payment of the claim at their meeting before a check can be issued. It is not something that's pre-authorized to be expedited. Thank you.
They've already approved it, thank you.
All right. The seventh is pretty close.
Eight is a week from Friday.
There is a difference, let me be clear about something. There's a difference between them approving something as department heads on, on, on a purchase order that they submit to the auditor's office and them approving a claims docket, which is a list of a bunch of things they've sent to us for us to pay that we can only pay after they approve that entire list at their commission meeting. That latter thing I just said hasn't happened yet. We cannot pay it.
I just think it's better next year.
So now we have a motion on the floor to come out of Lit Economic Development. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Six one carries. Requesting additional appropriation from Lit Economic Development, rainy day, Riverboat, or Wind Tax, or ARP for the annex construction for a million dollars.
Motion approved on a rainy day.
We have a motion to approve out of rainy day.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
This question, everybody's going with the figures, we have enough rainy, Mr. Novak, a million dollars.
There's.
Rainy day, so we're, we're.
Second, second.
So we have a motion, second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, just for the edification of the public, could you explain what this is for?
So currently, I know we owe, we owe seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. And that's just for, I believe, October. Is it, uh, cause we get the.
September, October.
September, October. And now we're in November. The reason why we got backed up on this was because again, instead of, we had five claims and I had sent five claims to the auditors and we talked about this, three of them got paid because three of them were able to be pulled out of those three specific accounts that you have designated. And then the other two large ones, which tally up to the seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents, was not in those three categories.
So this is work that was outside of what was approved from rainy day before, correct?
No, this is consistent work. Like this is work that they're doing up there every single day, so.
If, yeah.
To appropriate.
Yes would be the answer. It wasn't previously approved.
Well, it was based upon the discussion we've had that we need to continue to fund the project and we were told that additional million dollars to at least put in that account to continue to pay the invoices on a timely basis. When you have vendors who are local, local vendors, and you have people who pay local taxes, it's important to get the money to them as soon as possible and not delay it any further. So this was to cover the, to help cover that.
And were these items bid out?
Yes, they were.
All of, all of this was bid?
That was when we bid it out, remember? And then it came back two million dollars more than what you originally, when you guys asked to shut down the project and bid everything out. And then it came back two million dollars more.
And Mr. Page and Mr. DiMartino, feel free to jump in here. All of it wasn't bid out, only the portion that was being funded with rainy day funds, public funds, was bid out, correct?
So this money now, to give you an example. We had to, it had to purchase flooring. Flooring is going to be a coverage.
Could you turn up his volume a little bit?
Can you turn it up? We're having trouble hearing you.
You have to speak up.
For instance, can you hear me now? I don't know what's going on with my computer. Is that better?
A little better. Unfortunately, I need to shout.
A little better, okay. So for instance, the building needed flooring. Flooring is gonna be a covered expense with the insurance company, but it's gonna be a reimbursable expense because we have to lay out the money and then we have to get that reimbursed. So this money is gonna be more for a float.
So just to clarify and get the original question answered, this work was not bid out?
Well, I don't know what work, this work was not part of the plumbing, HVAC, hot water pipes, those, those areas that we put out for bid.
So, so it was not put out for bid?
It's reimbursable.
Mr. Keel, I've answered the question three times.
I was looking for like a yes.
It was not put out for bid. Can you hear me? Am I clear?
Yes.
So would you like to shut down the project, Mr. Keel, and then we can suck it out?
Nope, I'm just asking if it was bid.
Commissioner Graham Rosso, please don't. Let's, uh, let's continue on. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Five two?
I do, I do.
Yeah. Counsel, we're down to counsel attorney comments. Would anybody like to make a comment?
Mark, do you wanna say something?
I do.
But first, Mr. Cunningham said he'd like to make a comment.
Aye. I remember at the beginning of the meeting, I asked that we should consider issuing a single statement to all of the department heads, whether or not each of us going to our. Statements. In light of the fact that we just approved two point three three million, or that plus the change.
Microphone.
Earlier in the meeting, I asked that we issue a consolidated statement to our department heads, if that's our choice. But we just approved two point three three million and change in additional appropriations for the commissioners. And now you want me to go back and talk to somebody about giving ten thousand dollars back to the general fund?
No. I don't.
So is it the consensus of this council that we not do that? Or is it the consensus of the council that we do a joint statement? Because I think it's ludicrous for seven of us to go out to talk to the department heads and issue different statements. That's my position.
If I may, I think we can make this general statement, if you, if you agree or not, that we request all department heads to appropriately spend minimal amounts for the remainder of the year, purchase only what they absolutely need to purchase and, and stay within their budget. And with that statement, we're not asking anybody to give anything back, but we're just asking them to be frugal for the, for the next month.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have a change to that?
I'd like to echo that comment throughout the entire year. I mean, that should be, they should always be.
But at this point, you know. Okay, appreciate that. Does that answer what you, your request?
Absolutely, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Mr. Yagowski, you had a comment that you wanted to add?
Yes, sir. Mr. Staples, did he, did he send a second bill out and got paid for the attorney?
His attorney.
His attorney this year for, is it ten thousand dollars?
I'm sorry, you speaking with, to me?
Yes, sir. Did we have, did we send a second bill out this year for ten thousand dollars for the attorney?
Okay. There was a bill that was paid for ninety-six ten, and then there was a bill that was paid for ten thousand eight hundred. There's a twenty-eight hundred and seventy dollar bill that the council and commissioners have declined to pay to date.
So the commissioners declined to pay, but we paid it? I'm asking.
Sorry, I answered the question. I'd be happy to try to answer it again. What, what are you asking?
The bill that the commissioners declined, declined, the two commissioners, was that bill paid?
The bill, that, that bill, that bill was paid, correct?
Yes.
The twenty-eight hundred dollar one?
No.
Ten thousand.
No, no.
Okay.
I just.
Yes, the ten million eight hundred dollar bill was, was paid.
And it was paid before it even came to the commissioners.
I understand. That's my point I'm trying to bring up. So I, we have rules, I guess, but we're play, we're gonna play by what rules. I just wanna know what rules we're playing by.
Well, the rules we play by is that the council authorized and appropriated for that bill to be paid. And, and, and on that basis, just like you pay your own attorney, the commissioners don't deny you paying Mr. DiMartino when, when you seek to pay him. You, you authorized to pay my attorney and, and we paid it. Yeah, so.
So the two attorneys that were paid, the two bills that were paid were just strictly for your attorney. It wasn't for going and saying that the, the last court case that you were appealing, that, that has not been paid, right? That you were appealing?
I have a totally understandable bill that hasn't been paid. There's additional charges that I'm sure that have come that have not been passed out of the council yet because there's a previous bill that hasn't been paid by the council or commission yet.
I understand.
But yeah, there's addition, there's additional charges. We have to end up suing La Porte County to do it. Well, we'll have to sue La Porte County to do it, so I'm treated fairly.
So the two checks that we, that we, that were paid. Mr. Staples sues La Porte County, I will represent the county for nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm talking about why you're sitting.
Wait, Mr. Staples, I have a question.
Mr. Staples.
But why we're saying that, Mr. Mr. Staples, because Mr. Keel told me repeatedly that he couldn't hear me and I was trying to emote and you sent a bunch of text messages that you believed were going to Mr. Keel again ranting about.
I did.
Which I didn't want to publish.
Okay, I'd be more than happy to see you publish them. I thought you acted inappropriately, sir.
Mr. Keel, were you able to hear me?
Okay, gentlemen, I'd like to end this, I'd like to end this discussion. If you wanna take that offline, that'd be fine. However, Mr. Yagowski, please continue with where you were going.
So the two checks that were paid, were they strictly checks that were paid for legal services to do the case, or was it for appeal?
They were to do the case.
They were strictly, they were, I'm sorry, that question's for me, isn't it?
Yes, it is, sir. Yes, it is.
The, the, those were, those were directly related to the Freedman Billings dispute case.
Okay, thank you.
The shop Freedom dispute case, that's what those were paid.
Okay, but I'm, I'm gonna make my.
There were bills related directly to that.
So I'm allowed to make my statement. There's, you're, you're not here to comment on my statement. Again, there's a two-fold system here and this is what I'm trying to go, I have no problem. This, this particular billing project was approved by all three commissioners. I was, Mr. Staples was at that meeting because I, I presented at that meeting for the, to, to tear the house down. Actually, Mr. Haney brought up a motion. It was seconded by Rich. So it was uniformly accrued by the, by the council and commissioners, but we're gonna sit there and play games with even a bill that's something like this, that we're sending a bad signal out for La Porte County, that we're gonna pick and choose paying bills. That's all. Thank you, sir.
That is not correct.
You're coming, sir.
That is not.
Sir, you're out of line. Would you please take him off?
Follow the law.
Would you please click him off?
Follow the law.
Would you please click on?
You don't understand.
Thank you, sir. He's not part of this meeting, he's not allowed to talk.
I just wanna, I just wanna echo one other thing that has nothing to do with that, but, and, and this goes with Mr. Yagowski. Michigan City lost a very good friend. I, I hate to be the one that always has to bring up people that passed away, but it's near and dear to me, but John Sheets.
bring up people that passed away, but it's near and dear to me, but John Sheets passed